I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of 2023. With us tonight, we have Pastor Terry Jones with the Resurrection Hope Church. He's going to lead us in convocation and I ask that everyone remain standing for pledge allegiance immediately following.
Thank you. Lord God, we thank you for the opportunity to bring you before this crowd this evening. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunity to have you here in a public place inside a government building. Lord, we just ask that you would grace us with your mercy and your grace this evening, that you would oversee everything that is happening here this evening, Lord, and that your will be done in all that is decided. I thank you for all the interested people that are here, Lord, to bring their cases of the things that they are interested in. But Father, just be with this meeting. Grant us all peace and consolation, and we'll give you praise, Lord, our loving Savior Jesus Christ, and amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Here.
Haney.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Here.
Vice Mayor Haney and Mr. Klein couldn't be here tonight. They let us know they have an, they both have separate events that they have to attend for their children. Next up, we have the approval of minutes for a regular council meeting of April 27th, Finance Committee meeting of April 27th, Public Utilities Committee meeting of April 27th, and the Parks and Recs Committee meeting of April 27th. Do we have any edits, omissions, or additions? Seeing none, that those stand as... If anyone would like to approach council, please come to the podium, state your name and address. You'll have five minutes to address council.
Good evening. My name's Hugh Scott. I live at 1414 South Fifth Street here in the city of Ironton. I'm approaching council this evening. I had brought this to attention of our city solicitor. On Monday, 24th of April, I was visiting residents throughout the city and talking of building homes, building houses. And on the north end of Ironton, the resident was very unhappy because of his taxes. And he said it was a, this is a neighbor, I'll say that's a neighbor, that he felt that he didn't pay as much tax as he should have paid. And him building his home, he did. But the conversation kept on pursuing in, but I made him aware. I said, "Have you heard of the property tax abatement?" He came up and he says, "No, I know nothing about that." I said, "Well, anyway, when I was on council before myself, a few more city residents and buildings, building houses and new construction and renovations, new property tax abatement ..." "...on the books of the state capital. On April 25th, Tuesday, I contacted the, after I was swimming over to YMCA, I called the city solicitor's office, and the secretary told me, said, "Mr. Anderson wasn't there." Either one of them. So she told me, said she would have him to return my call. So he did. He returned my call. And I asked Attorney Anderson, Pac Anderson, that's who it was, "Did he know anything about tax abatement?" He says, "Well, Hugh," he says, "I think the best avenue you need to take is go back to your finance," I mean Director of Finance here in the city of Ironton. So I called Director of Finance, Mr. Ehlum, and he made me aware of it, says, "No, Hugh, I don't know too much about that." He said, "The best place to call is over at the courthouse at the treasure department or property, you know, where you pay your taxes." And he says, so I called them, and they put me on hold. And the young lady got back on and said, "Well, we don't, we don't handle that here." So she directed me to the auditor's office. And I talked to, I think it was Parker, Parker Road, and he gave me the phone to, he said he didn't know too much about that, but Chris Klein, the, I guess he's the auditor's secretary over there at the courthouse, and he says, "Well, Hugh," he says, "that abatement, we don't have nothing to do with that. That's between the city and the CAO." I said, "Okay." He said, "That's who handles it." I called back to the city finance director, Mr. Ehlum, and he says, "He, that's the first he ever heard of it." And I understand he... It probably was. But anyway, I couldn't get any information on it. So that's what I'm here this evening about. There's a lot of new housing going up through the city. And there's quite a few homes that have been constructed. And I just wonder, who's eligible for tax abatement here in the city? It's still on the books, still on the books of the state. And I just wonder, you know, who's eligible? If that's the case, I think people should be, they should put it in the, in the paper of some sort saying who's eligible and who's not eligible. And because they do it with property taxes on people's illiquid taxes, and it's going around throughout the city, and that's how oxygen people lose their property. Anyway, my, my main focus is on tax abatement. And I'm here to ask any councilman if you know about that, and who's eligible of getting this tax abatement.
Hey, I've heard of tax abatements. I actually had to go to the Ironton City Schools to address the school board because we have been offering some tax abatements to new businesses. As far as I'm aware, tax abatements are only eligible for new businesses that are constructed. And we, the city of Ironton, don't approve or, or have any involvement in the process. We, we just got a heads up that they were being done because the city schools had asked us questions, because property tax, as you know, mainly affects the city schools, not, not revenue here on council for the city of Ironton. So that we found out through that, that the tax abatement officer at the time, I can't say whether that's still the case, but at the time, the county tax abatement officer for Lawrence County was Ralph Klein.
Well, Ralph Klein really referred back to you all and the CAO. So they're saying that they don't have nothing to do with it over there. So it's...
You're talking about Chris Klein.
Chris Klein, yeah.
Yeah.
What did I say?
I'm talking about Ralph Klein.
Oh, oh.
So Chris Klein's the deputy auditor. Ralph Klein with the CAO is, is the tax abatement officer for Lawrence County.
Okay. Yeah.
So that's who I would ask questions to, because the last, the last time we were presented with, with tax abatement was because the city schools had asked. And I was completely unaware that that existed until, until they had asked those questions. And they told us that if they were going to grant tax abatements, that they would give us a heads up and let us know, but that they would only do so if it was contingent on bringing in new businesses from the city of Ironton.
Well, seeing that if you're in collaboration with Mr. Klein, Mr. Ralph Klein, you said? That in collaboration with the city and CAO, that it should be a tight conversation going there to make you better aware of what's going on through this tax abatement. And you have no idea what's going on other than the school system?
We, we formally asked at that time that if there were tax abatements offered to new businesses coming to town, that we be made aware so that we, in return, in good faith, could be, could make the city schools aware.
Well, have you heard of...
We have not.
Did he offer to build in homes?
We have, we have not. But homes wasn't qualified.
Well, I'm standing here, I got it. A few years ago, a few other residents here in the city, and they offered to us.
I can't speak to that.
I understand.
But as far as I, as far as I know, that it's for new businesses that are constructed in, well, in Lawrence County, just the city of Ironton. And Ralph Klein is the tax abatement officer for Lawrence County. Mr. Perry and then Mayor.
Okay. Greg, I can confirm when Jeff Fields purchased Frogtown, he inquired about the tax abatements and his, the information was delivered to him in a very specific way. It's only for new businesses coming in. It wouldn't have applied to even an existing business. And it did not apply to property homeowners for their property taxes. So just confirming.
Furthermore, it's, it, I believe, in the investment area, CRA, like where it's St. Mary's, Bill, Ruth, Gateway Center, you can establish new CRAs forever. I don't know if you can extend the rules to residential or commercial ground, but I know that there is a certain threshold where it can stay under. And it doesn't have to be approved by the state, but if it seems that there's a threshold, which I know very closely, St. statute, then that has to be approved by the state.
Well, reasonable, I'm just bringing you all's attention. Now, thank you for your response, but residents are very upset, resident was very upset about it, because, you know, we worked hard, but even when we built our home, you know, in the eighties, you know, I was on council in the latter part of nineties, I had to even go to the state and find out more information. So hopefully, my understanding is still on the books, if I bring it back, that there's other information that's out there that people will be more informed that they can get this for building their homes. Of course, there is a lot of new homes being put up in our city all over, and especially out on the Ninth Street area. And I just seen that, and I just wanted to make this resident aware, because he's very distraught, upset, and said, "Well, I just want to be treated fairly," you know. And so, "Well, I'll ask them this property tax abatement." And they were exempt, a certain amount of years on their taxes, because they build new, new structures in the city.
Appreciate you coming to council, and we're going to move along to our next, if anyone else wants to approach council.
I want you soon. Thank you. Mayor.
I do believe that individuals can ask that their property be reassessed, and often that leads to little lower taxes.
Okay.
So they could ask the county tax associate to do that.
All right, sir.
Thank you very much.
Gary Morrison, 621 South Third Street. I've got a piece of property that I bought off the land bank, and there's a piece of property that joins the property that I'm going to try to develop. The city owns it, and there's no, there's no parcel line. And it's surrounded, this is my property that's surrounded by it. I've got four street names on one side, an alley, and then another alley, et cetera, behind Peddlers here on... So it's between Four Street and Peddlers. So that's Joan Street that comes down beside the alley, and then you've got the other alley that ends up by Home Town. So there's 15 feet there that we're not going to build on. We just, we want to build on our property line, we'll need this for parking to get into it. We want to build our, we want to build our structure right on our property line, but to get into it, there's 15 feet there, and it's just grass. If you look up to Four Street, it should be in line with a sidewalk. Of course, on the fifth, on the next block up, on the other side of Four Street, it's perfectly... Never going to be a sidewalk before here. I've got some things we printed off, if somebody wants to look at them. I talked to Mr. Anderson and explained it to him. It's not really a sidewalk, it's grass. We got the sidewalk, we're not going to be there at all. There you go, eh?
We actually, we probably, us.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
But I kind of highlighted it there. But it's actually the grass, it's nothing to do with the sidewalk going down the street. It's, see where I have it surveyed, and it goes to the telephone pole, and then it goes from, to the stop sign. It's 15, 15 feet of grass. We're not actually going to build one, but we're nothing, we're just going to build on our property line.
Like, if, if that were vacated, what, what's your intent for that?
Well, it's a commercial piece of property. Actually, why I bought it was to build it in self-storage units. And to come off that alley, it's grass, we would just make parking there, so people would come up and get to their self-storage unit.
So parking, or you would turn it into a driveway of sorts, that kind of thing?
Yeah, we would, we would not be, we wouldn't, because there's no use on it. I would need, I was going to put 40-foot containers on it, but I was only 39 feet. I needed extra foot, and then I decided to go a different way, and just go build a metal building, and then I'll have my drive on this way and this side, and then I'll be, if I put it on the property line, I'll need that for people to get to their, to their units.
We actually discussed this in the Public Utilities Committee meeting a couple weeks ago.
Sure.
And I think some people had some reservations, they, they wanted more time to consider it, what it might mean to our future, what's that piece of property going to be 50 years from now, that sort of thing. So it can be brought up again to us, and I thank you for...
I'm just trying to, try to explain to you, I mean, what we, what our intention, but we've got 15 feet of property there, that's just, I mean, there's no, there's no parcel number with this piece of property. We're not going to the alley at all.
Right.
So I mean, you'll see, it's just vacant land, that's...
Yeah. I actually went up there and drove around and took a look at it. It's not a very big...
No, it's really, I mean, I don't know what you could do with it.
It's just a little bit of dirt, yeah.
And like I say, the property that I have, I have a, I mean, the three sides there, I'm the only one that's surrounded. So we would like to get started and develop, is what we would like to do, but we need your okay to do that. So see what you can do for me, let me know when we'll get over there.
Okay.
But I talked to Brigham about it, he understood what, I think we had a misunderstanding about, thought I was going to vacate the sidewalk. I'm not, because the sidewalk was never built. This is just vacant, well, you looked at it, it's just vacant property. That's our intention to do it. I appreciate you down. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jenny Barnes. I live in Anfield, North Third Street. That's across from 929 North Third Street. Currently, 929 North Third Street has seven trucks. Four do not run and are untagged, four are just there, one excavator, one huge thing that I think may be a trencher. It's been there about a month and appear to work. An excavator, a big trailer, some sort of huge rusted thing. I don't know what that is. When I first moved there, it wasn't that bad. It has gotten untenable. My friend is here, Sally Sheedler, she's been with me through all this. I mean, you don't have to believe me, I have timestamped pictures. Some of these junk trucks have sit there two years, some six months, some three months. They get in and out of my driveway, and were I to have a fire, no fire truck could get in there. Now, why this has been allowed to go on all these many years, I don't know. Multiple ordinances, multiple code violations. I have complained. Nothing much ever happens. 929 contends he has friends. He pulled his excavator upon my friend's... She said, "I can't move my car." He said, "Who do you know?" He said, "I know lots of people." She barely could get out. We had to move so she could get out. So we all want Ironton to be better. I just ask that you come over and take a look at 929 North Third Street. And if you can help me, I ask that you help. There's no way I could sell my house without a $10,000 to $15,000 hit. No one would buy my house. And I don't mean to be rude, but if any of you lived across from 929 North Third Street, this would have been cleaned up years ago. If anyone you cared about lived across from 929 North Third Street, this would have been cleaned up long ago. I don't know anybody, I'm not kin to anybody, I'm just a taxpayer. So thank you for your time. I know you may or may not believe me, there are multiple time stamped pictures showing these things have sit there for years and years. Now, some years ago, I have to say, Mayor Cramblett, I don't know how, somehow two huge dump trucks that had sit there for probably five years got moved. Unfortunately, 929 replenished his supply with four more junk trucks. So I just thank you for listening and hope for the best.
Mr. Perry.
Oh, I forgot to vote. Sorry. It's hard to keep up, everybody. And I'm not a confrontational person, this is very nervous making, I'm there alone. It's a risk coming here and complaining. So far, nothing good has happened from any complaint I made against 929 North Third Street except for two huge dump trucks. So I thank you for your time. Let me ask Sally if I forgot anything else. Kami was the one whose car got excavated. I'm the one that's got 11 dump trucks, four don't run, four not tagged, four sort of run, one excavator, one trencher that doesn't seem to run, one huge rusty thing, the track, the trailers. I think that's it. Thank you all.
Mr. Perry.
Ms. Barnes, thank you for coming, and I can tell you, I've witnessed this, this neighborhood to have us be right behind my job, and she's not exaggerating.
Everybody that comes to my house says, "How does he get away with this?" I don't know. You tell me. How does he get away with this? I did not contact Chris Perry. One of my friends came to my house and said, "How does he get away with this?" I said, "I don't..." Chris, Chris took it upon himself to come to 929 North Third Street, and he has tried to help. So far, to no avail. So thank you all.
He typically blocks a fire hydrant. I think maybe for the past week, that vehicle has been moved.
But his workers still block it.
So it's, it's, it's been an ongoing issue, my understanding. It was a mayor or two even before Mayor Cramblett.
No, well, I graduated from, I know they were definitely excited for a couple...
And they were paying back Mayor Cramblett. They, they come inside, and then they never come back.
That's because you know, they'll talk to you.
And nothing hap...
Well, they knew that, and that's why you might want to reconsider some of the ordinances if someone's playing that loophole. Maybe they're moving it back. Yeah. It's kind of sad, it's still the same spot for five days.
There has to be an ordinance against junk trucks that do not run. You can't drag junk trucks around and say, "I'm done," which is what is happening. Every old reaper's though, he'll drag them around, maybe, if he's taking them. But they still don't run. There has to be an ordinance against junk trucks on the street. There are timestamps that show you how long they've sit there. I don't mean to argue with Mayor Cramblett, but he doesn't live there.
I'm not arguing with that. I just thought it was... Mr. Perry.
Is there an ordinance against junk trucks on the street that don't run for years?
It's, I don't...
There has to be.
One, one other thing, at least a handful of these vehicles are not currently registered.
Oh, yeah, they're not tagged, four of them are not tagged.
Mr. Cleary.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out where your pop comes out of. The West Orange School.
Go under Nevada, or Street on the right, it's Union, it's a little short street, turn right, one block, and then you'll run right into North Third, mile, quarter, and you'll know one on the right, and 929 is right across from it. I invite you to come over.
Bob, it's, it's two blocks from the sheriff.
Just what?
Two, two blocks from the sheriff heading back toward the overpass.
Yeah.
I'm like down in there by myself. I'm right on that alley, out of sight, out of mind.
We appreciate you coming, and it's first that I'm aware of it. I don't know how you've issued your complaints in the past, but we do have a link on our website where you can submit those photos, I believe. And we'll look into the ordinances and try to see if there's anything. I plan on going to check it out, yeah.
I personally called the Ironton police and complained. I personally spoke to Mr. Cramblett. I personally sent letters in 12 years. It's gone terrible for the last, oh, five. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is John M. Taylor Sidera, 723 South Eighth Street of Ironton. Been off in one life, been a resident here. The past couple of weeks, been absolutely ridiculous over in the area. We have a person and a friend that are living in her grandmother's house. That these people have been a nuisance. They have spray painted the street, they have spray painted this woman's house, she's a nursing home. They have been caught trying to, climbing back over the fence of my neighbor's house while they tried to break in. They had eight dogs on the property, no water, no food, I complained. And after getting in contact with several people, it was like, you had to call this one, you had to call that one, I don't see excuse for that. Years of recent, they went to our new neighbor's property, they stole off his property. I called the police, they came down, they knocked on the door, they didn't answer. If I stole something, I wouldn't answer the door either. So they took the man's property back to his house, he had to go to work. As I was coming back from the doctor's office, they went back up to the property and re-stole. Called the police again, and the police had them carry the property back. Why were they not arrested? I am not understanding that. These people are a nuisance. This lady has just recently had someone have a power of attorney over her, and they did vow, but it's after the automobile. Every day, they were bringing items out of her house, they were selling things, they were dumping garbage, they had over 10 grocery carts from various stores, which I called them and asked them, "Will you please come and send somebody to come and get your property? Because they are using it to, because they don't have a car." Obviously, they sold the car that they stole. Looked outside, one of the neighbors tells me that she's using them with a sofa on two of these grocery carts, pushing it up the street. My neighbor to the rear of me, Mrs. Fletcher, 88 years old, had to deal with these people bringing debris and dumping it in her front yard. I instructed her that she needed to call the police. They came, the guy was bringing a grocery cart full of stuff to dump in her yard again, and looked everybody straight in the eye and said, "I didn't do it, you're doing it now." They went back home. They went and got the dogs out of the yard, and didn't even think, maybe we should turn the light back on. out of the yard. Didn't even think, "Maybe we should turn the electric back on. The electric and water is off." They are using the scotty potties, of which, uh, are for the workers that are building those little brick houses. That's what they're using for them. Absolutely. We're not wanting to deal with this anymore. I cannot imagine stealing something and then just being told, "Oh, just take it back." I didn't do it to run a test on them. I know it. I took the classes. It's obvious that these people are users. That's neither here nor there. It's the fact that they stole the stuff and then were caught bringing it back and not arrested. I don't understand. What's going on here?
Mr. Perry.
Ms. Taylor was, uh, kind enough to reach out to me Monday at the beginning of this whole basketball hoop theft incident. And it's progressed, and to the mayor's credit and to the police department, um, they've systematically been taking reports all along. A couple of the details that have been left out, the, the, uh, the bad guys, um, are sending threats of violence-
So, that's the rest.
-threats of violence and death threats to the gentleman and his wife, who have been assigned powers of attorney. Uh, but items being stolen, sold and stolen, out of the house. Uh, Sergeant McKnight and the newest police officer, Sam...
I just had two reports. All the two people pressed.
They, they showed-
All the other stuff. I didn't know when to press charges on anyone.
I think they-
Maybe you have to, uh, file something.
I think they did today. But to-
They were one today, I think yesterday, I think before. That's all I had.
To, to IPD's credit, Sergeant McKnight and the newest police officer we just hired, uh, were kind enough to help the property owner and myself carry the basketball court or hoop back to his property. Four hours later, they're stealing again. And so, it's, uh, it's, unfortunately, it's just, it's, it's a, it's a deteriorating issue that has been going on for at least six months. Because I know, even while I was not in town, Ms. Taylor was showing up to counsel, asking for help. So, it's, uh, it's gotten progressively worse. The, the gentleman that seems to be the ringleader of this is from Philadelphia. The threats that he sent, he sent by Facebook Messenger, so it's got his name and his picture. Um, and, uh, so, those items, I think, have been handed over to the police department as well. But it's, uh, it's just, it's, it's gotten progressively worse and worse and worse over the past couple of weeks. And this week, it's come to a halt.
And that's just really, um, I'm, I was at a court hearing, this is years ago, and the young man stole one package of cigarettes. He's got six months in state detention. For these people to not be arrested, when they are bringing the man's property back to their property, I'm not understanding. As far as, um, a couple who were threatened, been in constant contact with them, I know that they're friends with the victim, because the man had come over about the dogs. As I called him, I said, "The dogs have been barking in here forever. They have a little dog door. The dogs come out, crap all over everybody's yard." I turned the fecal material to their yard. I signed, uh, a complaint that the officer offered me this past week. But I desperately felt like we're going to wrap around in circles. It should never escalate to the point of now, offering physical threats against this couple. Because they have no business in the house to start with. I had tried to help Connie, she's the owner of the home. She kept falling down. And my son has tried to help her get back off the ground, stuff like that. So, she is not physically able or capable of taking care of her property. She just has, seriously, a lot of stuff on her mind. But with that being said, this is one of the people that lives in the house is her granddaughter. The child's mother has been in prison for years. This child is in trouble, from my understanding, often on- ...or miss. But for this to escalate, that they are actually sending written statements showing that they're threatening these people, for the graffiti that they put in the street, "F you," basically, "Ha, ha, ha, that's why we did this with the car," something to that effect. Now, there's dirt over top of it, so I can't tell if they're trying to clean it up or whatever. We have never had any problems. I've been back to Ironton for three years. We have never had any problems until this group of people decided to descend in our neighborhood.
We'd have something done.
And, and I appreciate your concern. I apologize, but we, we have to move on to the, to, we've got a lot of people here that-
Right.
-uh, need, need to be able to address council. Um, I, uh-
I wouldn't even have to be here speaking on this if something had been done from the beginning.
Yeah, and, uh, the only thing, uh, that I, 'cause I, I, you've been here a couple, I've been in that seat, but we've talked about this situation and, um, we're aware of it. Counsel's role is legislate and appropriate. Um, and we, we, we can only do so much here.
So, do I need to call the Attorney General? I'm just asking.
Mr. Pierce.
If I may suggest that you do a, a couple of things here. I, I know this may seem trivial, but call the Health Department, have them take a look at the situation, call, uh- ...you to do police reports. And all these things will accumulate a paper trail, so that at some point, when, when it's acted upon, there'll be documentation of all the stuff that's-
After somebody gets killed.
We, we don't want it to come to this.
I mean, it's that serious to me. Yes, somebody will get killed.
But I'm just suggesting to do those things to create a body of evidence.
All right, we, we need to move on. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Amanda Cleary, 1742 North Second Street. Um, here this evening to share with council some of the projects that Third and Center have coming up. On May twenty-first, we will be repainting the crosswalks at the intersection of Center and Third Street in downtown Ironton. Uh, that is a Sunday. We chose that day so that, that downtown businesses wouldn't be affected. The event takes place from one to three. Uh, we will be closing the streets, so just to make everyone aware, that Center Street from second, uh, to third, or, sorry, second to the middle, like by Wendy's, will be blocked off. And then Park Avenue will be blocked off. Um, you know, Third Street will be blocked off between Park and Center. So, that area around the fountain will be closed. But it's a day of art that we're inviting the public, I'm sorry.
What date is that?
Um, that is on Sunday, May the twenty-first. So, they'll be nice and bright for the Memorial Day Parade. Um, that day is interactive for the community. We invite all members of the community to attend. And artists will be doing outlines in the crosswalks. And then the students or youth or community members can come. And it's kind of like a paint-by-numbers. So, it's going to be a really fun, interactive project. Um, and then we are hosting the Second Annual Summer Solstice event that will take place on the riverfront on June the tenth. We have, uh, the day will start with a youth fishing instruction, and then it will lead into a community yoga session. There'll be an artist, an artisan vendor market. Uh, the talent show's coming back this year, and we have a pretty amazing lineup of musical talent, uh, for the day as well. So, we have some sponsorship packets that I would love for you all to take a look at. Um, and we are accepting sponsorships until, um, right before the end of May. So, all the proceeds from Summer Solstice will be used to- That program will be a pilot program, uh, as an after-school at Ironton Elementary for grades K through five. And it will be a nine-week course that students can explore all seven art disciplines, and it will culminate in a community art exhibit. And then also on June seventeenth, from twelve to seven P.M., Ohio University Southern Campus is hosting a cultural and heritage festival that will take place on the campus of OUSC. And that's a great, and that's going to be a great day as well, just full of, uh, music and celebrating our cultural history. Um, they have tons of music lined up and just fun, great day for the community as well. So, those are the three things that we have coming up next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina Byrne, seventeen, excuse me, Seventeen Seventy Centenary Road, Galvez. Uh, just wanted to kind of touch base. Uh, the Ironton, the Agro Health Coalition, um, including Mendon Reed's, uh, Chump's Point Housing, Lawrence County Recovery, the Counseling Center, and Hope Source Treatment, uh, provided a document to council members March sixth requesting continued operation of our facilities in order to continue providing crucial services to individuals with substance use and mental health disorders. As we have indicated- ...unemployment, homelessness, and jail overcrowding, as well as negatively impacting the employment workforce in the city of Ironton. In the attached document, we asserted that our facilities do not meet the definition of single-dwelling unit or family as described in Ordinance Number Twenty-One Forty-Three and Twelve Fifty Point Zero Five. These commercial facilities, which are licensed and certified to provide supervision and monitoring of residents, were previously accepted as personal service establishments to be restricted to business zones and should continue to operate as such. To date, we have not received any type of response regarding this document. Therefore, it is our assumption that this classification is acceptable to continue our established operations under these guidelines. As always, we would like to commend the Ironton City Council and the Ironton Zoning Department for their attention to this matter. Your efforts have improved the conditions for individuals struggling with behavioral health disorders and the community of Ironton by establishing standards for behavioral health entities, entities, and requiring that such entities be located in appropriately zoned areas. Um, I know that there were several, um, houses that were not, um, fully sanctioned that have scooted right on out of town, um, which is good for our clients and is also good for the residents of Ironton, because nobody wants twelve unsupervised people living next door to them in a residential setting, or in a residential zone. Um, our coalition will continue to meet monthly and would be happy to provide guidance and/or problem-solving to the council, the city of Ironton, and its residents as they relate to behavioral health services. Our agencies believe in the quality of care and are committed to the betterment of our community. We hope that we can continue to work together to ensure that the recovery community enhances the community as a whole. Thank you for your time and consideration. Um, so, we did have copies of that, as well as the previous document and all of our contact information. Um, we're not trying to continue harassing you guys, but we also don't want to just have our business be up in the air. Um, it's a, it's, it's pretty important to us to, to know, uh, we feel that we have gone above and beyond to, um, make changes in, in every way, way possible. And so, we, uh, just were hoping to, to have some understanding, um, that in, in looking at all the codes that that has where previously has, we were identified as being in a business zone, as that type of establishment. So, we're just asking to continue our, our operations as such.
Uh, first, can we get a copy of that?
I have copies.
Okay, thank you. And then, uh, we're ready.
He usually hears, but he's-
I usually the copy, that's it.
So, first of all, the city council has no authority whatsoever when it comes to enforcing.
Right.
They pass the laws, they appropriate the law, that's it.
Yes.
So, when you say, "We, since we sent you this letter and there's no response," we assume we're okay. I would not assume that.
Okay.
Counsel give you any legal advice from your own parents.
Which, we have. So, what is then our next, and our next step?
Enforcement is completely up to the mayor-
Okay.
-and his office, by our sitting charter. Uh, so, what, what they enforce and when they enforce is completely in their discretion. Counsel has no ability to enforce the law.
Okay.
And they have no ability to give you any variance on that.
No, we're not asking for any variance. So, we will, I guess, then be in touch, um, with the mayor again.
Be in contact with the mayor's office and deal with the code of law.
Yeah. We, we've been in contact several times. We just, um, that contact has kind of ceased, and we're still a little up in the air.
Craig?
Uh, you mentioned your coalition continues to meet monthly. When's your next meeting?
Next Friday, the nineteenth, it's up to date. Friday, the nineteenth, at twelve-thirty.
Is that about the whole Tribune that I-
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. We'd love to see whoever. I know there are only certain number of people can come, but yeah, we would love to, we'd love to have you guys there. Um, we're just trying to make sure that we're doing what we can.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? All right. Um, moving on, we have communications, uh, seeing none. Uh, we move on to reports, seeing none. Uh, we'll move on to ordinances. Marta, can you give, uh, first reading to Ordinance Twenty-Three Thirty-Six, please?
Extending Ordinance Twenty-Two Seventy-Five, imposing a moratorium upon new proved residential homes or facilities and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Any discussion? Can you give, uh, uh, first reading to Ordinance Number Twenty-Three Twenty-Four? Second reading, I'm sorry.
Setting a speed limit for trains operating in the city of Ironton, Ohio, and declaring an emergency. Second reading.
Chris, Chris sent a, uh, I don't know if he, uh, sent an email with the letter, the certified letter to, um, Norfolk. Did he send it to all of you all, or just Mike?
Right.
I, I requested that we send that certified. And I think he worried it good, just to keep them informed of what we were doing in the city and, and give them a chance to respond if, if they would choose. I know their bureaucracy and they won't, but I think it's in good faith for us to do that. So, I, I applaud his efforts, even though he's not here, for putting that together. Because I, I think it is important for communication on our end, just to say, "Hey, you know, seeing the, seeing the national news the last few months, we're, we're going to do this. Is there any impact to you all? Um, here's your chance to respond." So, I like that we're giving a three readings, and I also like that we're sending that certified mail and that letter. So, he, he asked that be part of the ordinance to Marta, I think. Now, did he send it to you?
Didn't.
Okay.
But I know of.
Okay. It's coming. That's all.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, Marta, can you give, uh, second reading to Ordinance, Ordinance Number Twenty-Three Thirty-Four?
Establishing fees for oversized loads in the city and declaring an emergency. Second reading.
Any discussion? All right. Moving on, we have resolutions, and there are none. Um, and then moving on, we are in miscellaneous. Mayor, do you have anything?
Yeah.
Mayor, when do you expect, uh, bids to go out for Phase Two of road paving?
I have an update. And, uh, so I'll start with that one. Uh, Phase One, about to wrap up. There are a few things we're touching up on, especially around the floodgates on North Second, because that's a particular area where you've got some, like, different type of ground with, I don't know what to call it. type of ground with... I don't know what to call it. It's a floodgate holder, whatever. You know what I'm saying. That has to be touched up around that area. And Phase 2 is close to going out the bit, I would assume, within the next week or two. We've locked in our street sign design, looking at getting waiting some quotes for all of them that'll go to each intersection in the city, along with the poll, type, color, et cetera. We've got cleanup date tomorrow downtown with St. Joe High School. Two more days of city dumpsters at the Wallerham Building. And we had our 60% progress meeting on the North End Storm Sewer and Paving Project. Waiting some updates within the next week to move forward towards that next 90%. Still looking at having that done in June, the design. We've got the Second Annual Memorial Day Pickleball Tournament coming up. You can register online on the city website. Also, there's the Kino Accords Basketball Tournament returning this year down at Knight Street Park. We got our final shop drawings on the storage containers for the Riverfront venue that we are putting together, that we still anticipate to start later this summer.
Okay. Street sign design, did that include the welcome signs? I know that was a discussion topic last night.
Not yet. ODOT, actually. Nate and I were at the Capitol yesterday for Legislative Day and spoke to the District 9 people at ODOT. They have a standard and quality of what you can put in those roundabout areas based on safety concerns. So Mike Dubrowski, the deputy director, is sending us those standards, so we can kind of move forward in procuring whatever it is we want to do.
And I mentioned it, Jacob, last time. I think the original welcome to Ironton signs were done by the Lions Club. It may be, A, either a cost savings to the city to reach out to civic organizations, one. And, two, even if it's not a cost savings, like a matching, you do one, we'll do one, and we'll split the price out of it.
One of those kind of is already. Ironton Blues has been leading the project around the one at the bridge for a couple of years. And this is where we can kind of fast forward it with our investment. But we were looking at more of like a monument style. It's about the cost of it, but it'll be worth it, you know, to introduce this to the city. Definitely think it's very ideal.
And then one more thing. Any update on our DORA?
Yeah, it's approved. Working with the businesses to get them to implement that into their system, kind of educate more so on how it works. But we have some that are familiar with it from other businesses in other cities that they have that DORA, but then there's a lot of them that are, it's apparently new thing.
Do we have tentative, like, dates on that?
I think we should get them ready first before we just push it out. I mean, as we've talked about, it's kind of a process, rolling out the whole entire system.
Thank you. We have passed legislation by ordinance in the past that our next meeting before Memorial Day weekend is on Monday rather than on Thursday, because it interferes with Navy Night every time. So we... so our next meeting is not on Thursday, Monday, the 22nd, at 6 o'clock. We've done that by ordinance, so we don't have to, like, announce it. It's just something that people always forget. But Thursdays, Navy Night, and that kicks off the festivities for the best weekend in Ironton, Memorial Day weekend. So anyway, just a heads up to everybody here and that watches and any of our interested audience participation members that enjoy city council meetings, Monday, May 22nd.
Okay. Thank you. What else? Okay. I've got a motion to adjourn, second by Greg. Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Chair.